Well, I'd like to call the meeting of the Erie County Council order on this day. Six o'clock, please rise for the 10th of late.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We've all been disciplined, we should have accountability.
We'll make a note of that, sir. We have an M-I-P-O-W, I'm impressed. Optional prayer or invocation?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. When you wake up in the morning, it's not just another day, it's another chance at life, another opportunity to challenge yourself to become better. Be grateful for every sunset and thankful for every sunrise because every day is a blessing. Thank you.
Well, Sharman, since this is your neck in the woods, a couple of nice opening words for the gang?
Well, it's my honor and pleasure to bring county council out to the McCain Township Building. I want to thank everyone that came tonight to see us. This is one of my favorite parts of my district and it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bale?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Rennie?
Here.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Here.
Mr. Scatella?
Here.
Mr. Winarsky?
Here.
And Chairman Shank?
Here. Well, this is the hearing of the public. We had Mr. Lou Alioto signed up. I don't see the gray fox here, so we'll open up to the... If there's any other folks that would like to say a few words, just give us your name and municipality, step up the podium, and you have three minutes.
Okay. I'm with the Erie Airport Authority. I also own North Coast Flight School, which is now currently in Meadville, Pennsylvania. I live in Edinburgh, Pennsylvania. And I just wanted to address Mr. Scatella and the rest of the board, just to let them know that I recently had heard that we are under investigation at the airport. It's a Title 13 FAA investigation, and that's pretty much all that I know as a board member. Unfortunately, I requested a copy of the investigation, what they're looking for. Not anything about the... I realize and I'm very well versed on any ongoing investigation. Of course, they're not going to discuss, and I understand that. I just simply wanted a copy of what I'm responsible for. And I was turned down, which is kind of putting us into a subset of a board. Obviously, if something comes up with the county council, everybody on the board gets disseminated so they can see that. I have not been able to, nor was I. Also, I was turned down to see this. I just wanted to make the county council aware of this more than anything. I'm not really sure as far as how that can happen, but seeing as how we answer to you, I wanted to at least let you know. That's all.
Thank you. Well, it appears Mr. Alioto showed up just in the nick of time, so you did sign up. So we're going to give you your five minutes. Give us your name and municipality, she has a microphone for you. Yeah.
May I?
Please.
Time I say?
I have a timer for you, sir.
You got it?
Whenever you start with your name and municipality, I'll hit the little green button.
Lou Alioto, Mill Creek Township. I've appealed before county council several times.
Could you hold the mic so the guy from the camera can pick it up? There you go.
And in presenting a resident taxpayer's comment about what is happening in our county, I'm disappointed, I really am. Now, I don't know whether Mrs. Spiros is here tonight representing the county executive. No, he's down. Okay. I won a particular open records request for the Department of Health's statistics. I won it last year. The last solicitor was Richard Perhax from the Knox Law Firm. And he appealed it. I have yet to hear since last December any response from the county executive or the county solicitor as to where it stands. I'm entitled to it, but yet they appealed it, and that's fine. But again, are we wasting money? Are we wasting taxpayer money? I've been in court since 2017 on a defamation lawsuit while I was a school board director, which they're using taxpayer money in the tune of about $200,000, which is in court right now. Abuse of power, abuse of office. So when I come to you and I present issues, which you have courtesy copies, correct? You have courtesy copies of everything that I wrote to the Airport Authority. So if you don't address the issue, and I believe Mr. Scatella is the representative of the Airport Authority from county council, what I would expect is that he shows up for those meetings. With the amount of information that we have gathered as taxpayers, residents, we got the attention of the FAA. Now the investigation is going to start. Where is the responsibility of Mr. Scatella, Chairman Shank, and the entire council members as to what your responsibility would be in looking into alleged violations of law, which is costing taxpayer money? So these are the things that we would like to see from our elected and our appointed public officials. Very simple, very simple. So I... And again, I'm going to address the same issue, is that when will I hear... You know, we talk about masks, the mask mandate. Well, that's in court now, right? We had to hire an attorney, all right? And then the school districts had to hire an attorney. That's wasting taxpayer money. Why doesn't the Department of Health release that information? All right, I'm going to close right now. I mean, I'm not going to go through anything more, but I will follow up my presentation in a written email to you so that you could look at it again. But I would expect a response from Mr. Spiros and from your attorney in county council. Okay? Thank you very much. Have a good one.
May I defend myself?
No.
Please.
This is not a debate, two-way street.
If he would like to see an excuse for my surgeon, I'll bring it to you. That's why I wasn't at that meeting. So watch your mouth. Watch your mouth.
Gentlemen?
You're disrespectful.
Gentlemen? We will not have that. Lou, please have a seat. Thank you. Is there any other folks who would like to say a few words at this time? Anybody else would like to say a few words at this time? Anybody else like to say a few words at this time? Seeing none, we will move on. I'll accept the motion for the minutes from the previous meetings to be approved.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first from the Sharerman, second by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Reports of the county officials, are there any reports from the county executive or his designate tonight? By seeing nobody, I would assume not. Next, we move to the Finance Committee. Ms. Sharerman, do you have a report?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. The Finance Committee met on Wednesday, August 31st, and submit to the agenda in Old Business A through C, in New Business A through F, R through T, and V. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We move to Personnel Committee. Mr. Scatella, do you have any report?
Yes, sir. The Personnel Committee met on Wednesday, August 31st, and submit to the agenda, Old Business D, New Business G through Q and U. And that's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll get you a second there to fix your mic. Okay, good. Are there any other reports from any councilman or person? Mr. Horton, go ahead.
I feel obligated to make some comments. You're right, we don't do back and forth. As a senior member here on county council, and I see citizens come to the microphone, and for the most part, we sit here, we acknowledge and we take notes. I do feel obligated to dispel some of the comments, mainly that the Airport Authority is an autonomous authority. They're regulated by the FAA, not regulated by county council. I wish Mr. Ali...
Alioto?
Alioto would have stayed here so that I could impress upon him that fact. He's a board member out there, so he should know that they're an autonomous authority. And most federal investigations don't go into or give you any information as a prior law enforcement officer. But here at county council, we make appointments, and they're an autonomous authority. Mr. Hayes, you're aware of that, right? And so we... So the comments that Mr. Alioto made are correct. And so I guess I'm the fact checker tonight. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to give a report at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to Old Business. Which takes us to A, second reading of ordinance number 97, entitled only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 97 of 2022, second 2022 Capital Projects Fund budget supplemental appropriation of $235,514 to move the location of the match for the Keystone Grant for the Blasco Library renovations to the Capital Projects Budget.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Mrs. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. That takes us to B, second reading of ordinance of number 98, entitled only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 98 of 2022, the ninth 2022 Library Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation for $235,514 to move the location of the match for the Keystone Grant for the Blasco Library renovations to the Capital Projects Budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Winarsky, second by Ms. Sharerman. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Sorry, and Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to C, second reading of ordinance number 99, entitled only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 99 of 2022, the 38th 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $117,757 to move the location of the match for the Keystone Grant for the Blasco Library renovations to the Capital Projects Budget.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Rennie, second by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to D, second reading of ordinance number 105, entitled only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 105, a 2022, 2022 Public Health Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $14,932 for the elimination of the epidemiological research assistant position and creation of the Public Health Preparedness Coordinator position.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Bale, second by Ms. Sharerman. Any discussion? And by the way, good job on that pronunciation.
Amy helped me. Thanks to Amy.
I had my fingers crossed.
I was scared.
You got it. All right, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Well, we'll just do the next one and then go for the second read, motions.
Okay. I'll do the amendments after that.
Yes.
Okay.
The next is A, reading of ordinance number 109, entitled only, please.
First reading of ordinance number 109 of 2022, the 42nd 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $911,743 for the PA Election Integrity Grant and creation of new bureau and line items within the county council department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to move to amend New Business by moving items B, N, O, and P to a second reading and moving item Q to the end of the agenda.
I'll second that.
I have a first by Ms. Rennie, second by Ms. Sharerman. This is just a vote on a second amendment. Second amendment. Wrong one. Second.
Whoa, boy. Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Okay, this takes us to B. This is a second read of ordinance number 110, entitled only, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 110 of 2022, the 43rd 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation and creation of new line items for vehicle lease donation valued at $13,361 for the District Attorney's Office.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Mr. Bale. Any discussion? And just for the record, this is basically a pass through, so it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. So roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. Takes us to C. This is a first reading only.
First reading of ordinance number 111, 2022, 2022 Children and Youth Services Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $92,000 and creation of new expense lines for the court-ordered placements.
This takes us to D. This is a first read only.
First reading of ordinance number 112 of 2022, the second 2022 Public Safety Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $5,000 for the creation of lines for direct purchase of trailer and reimbursement for the Northwest PA Emergency Response Group.
This takes us to E. This is a first reading only, entitled.
First reading of ordinance number 113 of 2022, first 2022 Drug and Alcohol Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $673,818 and creation of new line items for PA opioid settlement revenue for calendar year 2022.
This takes us to F. This is a first reading only, entitled.
First reading of ordinance number 114 of 2022, the 44th 2022 General Fund Supplemental Appropriation of $217,805 and creation of new lines for PA opioid settlement revenue for calendar year 2022.
Takes us to G. This is a first reading of 115, entitled only.
First reading of ordinance number 115 of 2022, 45th 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $2,279 for the manager of facilities and operations salary increase.
This takes us to I, first reading of ordinance 117.
We gotta go to H.
H.
Well, I forgot H.
Sorry, you're testing me, I appreciate that.
Yeah, good catch. This takes us to H. First reading of ordinance 116, title only.
Yes, sir. First reading of ordinance number 116, 2022, 46th 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $3,236 for job reclassification in the procurement office.
Okay, now we can do I.
Thank you.
First reading only.
First reading of ordinance number 117 of 2022, 47th 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $2,137 for the supervisor of revenue tax claim salary increase.
Takes us to J, first reading of ordinance 118.
First reading of ordinance number 118 of 2022, 2022 General Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $2,813 for manager salary increase in general accounting.
This takes us to K, first reading 119, entitled only.
First reading of ordinance number 119 of 2022, 2022 General Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $1,847 for assistant manager salary increase in general accounting.
This takes us to L. It's a first read of ordinance 120.
First reading of ordinance number 120 of 2022, first 2022 Planning Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $3,576 for the job reclassification in the Planning Administration Department.
This takes us to M, first reading of 121.
First reading of ordinance number 121 of 2022, 48th 2022 General Fund Budget Supplemental Appropriation of $3,576 for the job reclassification in Planning Administration Department.
Now, when we... A little bit earlier, we made a motion for second reads. You'll see it on your agenda, it'll show as a first read. We've actually changed that to a second reading, just for clarification. So N, this is a second read for 112, please.
Second reading of ordinance number 122, 2022, reclassification of EMS Plan Administrator Position from NB 13 to NB 15 grade level.
So moved.
I have a first by Ms. Sharerman, second by Mr. Winarsky. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to underscore the fact that the reason that this particular reclassification was moved to a second read is because it has been posted, I believe, numerous times and has not been able to attract qualified candidates. And so that's the reason for moving this along.
Thank you, ma'am, for that clarification. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to O. This is a second reading of ordinance 123.
Second reading of ordinance number 123 of 2022, 2022 Public Health Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $39,800 for the environmental position classification change from non-bargaining to bargaining.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Sharerman and a second by Mr. Winarsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to P. This is a second read in ordinance number 124, entitled only.
Second reading of ordinance number 124 of 2022, 2022 Planning Fund Budget Revised Expenditure of $15,839.07 for reclass of wages to CDBG, Mill Creek COVID Program, and creation of new line items.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Winarsky, second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. And at this point, we're going to jump over Q, and we're going to circle back around and bring that up here at the tail end. So if you're following us... I did. So let's go with Resolution. This is R, number 33, title only.
Resolution number 33 of 2022, abatement and exoneration of outstanding county taxes, interest, penalties, and fees on certain properties owned by the Erie Art Museum at East Fifth and State Streets, City of Erie.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Ms. Sharerman, second by Ms. Rennie. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to Resolution S, number 34, title only.
Resolution number 34 of 2022, supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Mr. Bale, second by Mr. Scatella. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I brought this resolution forward, and I'd just like to read something from NACO, which is the National Association of Counties. And they're launching this operation nationwide, and counties will literally shine green lights from their county buildings from November 7th through 13th. Veterans Day is November 11th. And it is to send a clear message to inspire veterans to reach out to their county Veterans Service Officers. And we're hoping, I feel pretty confident this will pass, and we're hoping that everybody in the county can show their support by maybe sticking a green light on even at their house. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bale?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes.
Mr. Winarsky?
Yes.
And Chairman Shank?
Yes. This takes us to T, Resolution number 35.
Resolution number 35 of 2022, approval of lease agreement between the County of Erie and Lesser Steve Lewis Contracting and Incorporated for the offices occupied by Magisterial District Judge Paul Bizarro.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Sharerman, second by Mr. Winarsky. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharerman?
Yes.
Mr. Scatella?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
And Chairman Shank.
Yes. This takes us to U, some appointments, possible appointment, title only, please.
Possible appointment of Kurt E. Hirsch to the Erie County Community College Board of Trustees, term to expire on August 31st, 2028.
So moved.
Second. I have a first by Mr. Horton, second by Mrs. Scatella. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
Mrs. Shireman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
And Chairman Shank.
Yes. Takes us to V, a possible sale of parcel, title only. You don't have to do the 500.
Thank you.
Numbers there.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Possible sale of parcel from the repository for unsold property.
So moved.
Second.
I have a first by Ms. Shireman, second by Mr. Horton. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Shireman.
Yes.
Mr. Scatella.
Yes.
Mr. Winarski.
Yes.
Mr. Bale.
Yes.
Mr. Horton.
Yes.
Mrs. Rennie.
Yes.
And Chairman Shank.
Yes. Before we go any further, I want to say hello, Scott. Thanks for coming out, former Councilman Scott Rastatter. Thank you, sir. We, I think we brought enough crowd today, but thank you. We appreciate you coming out. Did you bring the pizzas?
Yeah.
Well, thanks, buddy.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to request that we move into executive session at this time. Move that we move.
Yeah. At this point, we're going to ask you to kindly step out of the, out of the building here. We had to have a little kind of executive meeting with our attorney.